I think we're good to go.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, just turned six thirty, let's do it. All right, greetings, now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. Let the record show, we have Commissioner Adams, Glenn Winkle, Lawler, Nye, and Winter. Let the record show that Commissioner Ellis is excused and absent from the meeting tonight. So let's begin with commission communications, are there any communications commissioners? Doesn't look like any, so we will move on to staff communications.
Good evening Chair McCann, I'm Anas Latinsky, the Planning Division Manager for the City of Beaverton. I do not have any staff communications this evening.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the application for LU three twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six six seven Pointer Road Park. Case file number CUN three twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven nine eight. DR three dot three twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six six five. LLD one twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven nine nine. PD two twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight zero zero. TP two twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 six five. VAR three twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 seven nine. And RP one twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 eight zero. This item is continued from the July ten twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Planning Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code Sections forty point zero three point one Facilities Review Committee, Forty point one five point one five point five C New Conditional Use, Forty point two zero point one five point three C Design Review Three, Forty point four five point fif- point one five point two C Replat One, Forty point four seven point one five point one C Legal Lot Determination, Forty point five five point one five point one C Parking Requirement Determination, Forty point nine zero point one five point two C Tree Plan Two, And forty point nine five point one five point one C Variants. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, expertise contacts, or site visits to declare? Commissioner Adams?
No.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
No to all three.
Commissioner Lawler?
As I mentioned at the first hearing, I do, I live in the West Slope neighborhood, approximately one half mile from this proposed park, and I have no conflicts associated with the proposal. However, I have had the following expertise contacts with THBR's THPRD staff over the past few years. Specifically, I met with the THPRD administrative staff and board members this spring regarding the proposed name of this park. I participated as a board member of the West Slope Neighborhood Association Committee, or NAC, in the public planning process associated with the park's two-year design phase, including interactions with THPRD design staff during open houses and at their neighborhood meeting on February fifteenth at our regularly scheduled NAC meeting. I have not had any contact with THPRD design staff since this neighborhood meeting. All of the facts I've learned during my involvement and relevant to this review and decision are based on the materials included in the land use file and staff's assessment of the case files' compliance with relevant code standards.
Commissioner Nye?
Uh, no, it's all three.
Commissioner Winter?
Excuse me, no to all three.
And no to all three for me as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about expertise contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? We're seeing none. Um, let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. The city staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given twenty minutes for its presentation followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will have five minutes to speak. After a public testimony, the applicant will have three minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. So we will now begin with the staff presentation.
Great, can someone please confirm that my screen is being shared?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you Chair McCann. Great, good evening everyone, my name is Brittany Gata, I'm an Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. I'll be providing the staff presentation for the Pointer Road Park project. I'm joined this evening by my colleagues in transportation who are available to answer questions that are transportation related, so we are joined by Jabber Kasha, the City Transportation Engineer, Cara Hall, the Assistant City Transportation Engineer, and Fabio Defradis, the Senior Planner who worked on this project. I'd also like to direct the commissioners' attention to the two supplemental memos that accompanied the staff report for this project. The first was dated July tenth and the other was dated August first. And as mentioned earlier, this project was continued from the July tenth twenty twenty-four Planning Commission hearing. The applicant for this project is the Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District who proposes to develop a new public park in the RMC Residential Zoning District, and public parks are a conditional use in that zone. The park is about one point nine five acres in size and it's located in the West Slope neighborhood. The site is surrounded on all sides by residences except for the north where it's bordered by southwest Pointer Road and the highway a little north of that. And based on the proposed land use, the site design, and the existing site conditions like existing trees, the proposal requires seven land use applications which are listed here. Since staff provided a full presentation for this project during the first hearing on July tenth, I'll be focusing the presentation this evening just on the changes that have been proposed by the applicant since that hearing and just continuing the discussion about one outstanding safety concern that staff articulated in the staff report. So regarding changes since the previous Planning Commission hearing, the applicant made two changes to the site. The first was in regards to paving and the other was about landscaping and landscape buffers. So for the first change, an extension of a private driveway on the western side of the site was added, which provides an access point to an abutting property bordering this northern internal side property line. This also required revisions to the landscape buffers that are required along all side property lines. So landscape buffer location with plantings and fencing in this particular area were modified. The private driveway continues to maintain a connection to an existing driveway at the northwest edge of this area indicated by the red dot on the screen. So this continue, this is a continuous paved area connecting to an existing facility. And secondly, in other areas of the site not pictured here, landscape buffers were shifted around a little bit which resulted in more trees within the buffer area. So both of these changes and all of the modifications to landscape buffers do meet applicable design guidelines for this project. And the project continues to provide landscape buffers that maximize visual screening and horizontal separation in the higher activity areas of the park such as around the water play area, the playground, and the picnic shelter, which meets the landscape buffer design guidelines. Next, I'd likely like to briefly discuss a topic that was mentioned during the previous hearing, which is staff's outstanding concerns about pedestrian safety given the proposed design of the shared accessway. Staff understands that this is a constrained area. The site, the lot width on this portion of the site is only twelve feet wide and there are existing structural encroachments and access easements that must be respected. So this area, in this area, it's therefore not possible to provide any physical separation between pedestrians and vehicles who may be using the facility at the same time. So the applicant's proposed design is seen in this photo. It uses concrete for the extent of the shared accessway. It places a light broom finish over the accessway itself for pedestrians and a medium broom finish over the driveway portion. Thermoplastic striping is also used to delineate the accessway and lighted bollards are placed along the western edge of the pedestrian area. Staff is concerned that the proposed design does not provide long-term safe conditions for pedestrians using the accessway, just considering the expected wear and tear on paint striping over time. And considering that, the subtle difference between a light and medium broom finish may not, may not provide that obvious contrast especially when visibility is low around dawn and dusk or at night. For these reasons, staff is recommending a condition of approval that provides two options to revise. Either the accessway and driveway are constructed of two different materials. An example of this would be asphalt for the driveway and concrete for the accessway. Or if one material is used, the accessway must be pigmented and textured. So both of these options are providing both durable visual and durable textural differentiation to emphasize the pedestrian area of the shared accessway. And option one of this recommended condition is consistent with the design standard that is associated with the design guideline that is applicable to this project. And because the code's design standard requires that a different paving material is used for pedestrian paths across drive aisles, option one is a common surfacing treatment that is seen throughout Beaverton. And option two is providing a more flexible approach to the applicant to meet the intent of using two different materials, simply using pigmentation and a texture treatment instead. The applicant's narrative states that THPRD believes they will be able to maintain the painted surface in better condition long-term than colored concrete paving on the accessway. And staff evaluated this and disagrees with the applicant's concerns about maintenance of a facility using two different materials or pigmentation. And we believe that the long-term maintenance of paint striping does pose a challenge since frequent restriping may be needed to maintain compliance with the land use approval and to ensure continuously safe conditions for pedestrians. So in summary, staff finds that the additional safety improvements of the accessway and the recommended conditions of approval are feasible and they're needed to create long-term safe conditions for pedestrians who are accessing the park from Southwest Canyon Lane. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of this project subject to the conditions of approval identified in the July tenth staff report and the supplemental memos dated July tenth and August first. And that concludes staff's presentations, I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions with regard to this? Application? I, I do have a question Brittany, um, can you, sorry if you said it. Can you clarify who from a vehicular standpoint is using the accessway?
Yes, and I did not mention that this time around, thanks for asking. There are five residences that would be accessing the site, their properties from that Southwest Canyon Lane Shared Accessway facility. So five single detached residences.
Okay, so it's, it could be at any time that they're coming and going, okay.
That's correct.
The second question regarding the striping, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, is if the striping were used in lieu of a change in material or some of the other options that you put forward, what is, where is that happening? Is that just down the middle to delineate the two zones or, or kind of what would be the, the approach? If, and if that's a question for the applicant, we can push that over because I know they're about to give a presentation.
I'll defer to the applicant on that one, I, I, I think that they'll just be able to more clearly explain exactly where the striping will be placed.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, um, so with that, I don't think any other commissioners have questions, so the applicant will now have twenty minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
Hi Chair and Planning Commission, my name's Nicole Paulson. I am Planning Supervisor of Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District. Our address is one five seven oh seven Southwest Walker Road, Beaverton, Oregon nine seven zero zero six. And I have Catherine Shay with Langohansen as well, let her introduce herself and state her address.
Yeah, my name is Catherine Shay, I'm a landscape architect with Langohansen Landscape Architects in Portland, eleven hundred Northwest Gleason Suite three A, Portland, Oregon nine seven two zero nine.
I am going to attempt to share my screen and I am, please let me know if you can.
It's up.
Okay, great, wonderful, thank you, appreciate that. So I will go ahead and get this party started. We'll go over a little bit of our presentation that we had from last time. Chair McCann, I know you were not at the meeting, so for, for that presentation, we'd love to get you caught up in some of our, some of our project's history that we're excited to talk about, so I will get going. This is for the Pointer Road New Neighborhood Park and Trail. Did the screen switch for everybody? Great, okay. So in twenty eighteen, THPRD completed our Vision Action Plan where we created our overall park and recreation goals and this was shaped by input from over ten thousand community members, focus groups, and patrons all across our district. So our decision-making is really always aimed at balancing our resources and needs across the entire district. Where we always look to ensure that our goals include being welcoming and inclusive, providing play for everyone and that our sites are accessible and safe as well as preserving natural spaces. So the future neighborhood park site is at Southwest Pointer Road. It's located in northeast quadrant of our district, just south of Highway twenty-six, near the Sylvan Canyon Road exit, and the inner ring represents a half-mile radius or roughly a ten-minute walk and while that, that, while that outer ring highlights a one-mile radius and it's around about a fifteen to twenty-minute walk. This site is surrounded by some large pedestrian barriers with Highway twenty-six on the north, Canyon Road on the south, as well as Walker Road to the west. There's major, a major pedestrian route that runs along Pointer Road and that continues west through Ridgewood Park. That's that pedestrian trail, bike trail that you see along Highway twenty-six oftentimes when you're driving down towards into Portland. And this ped, bikeway takes you actually to the Sunset Transit Center, that crossing that's over Highway twenty-six. So the aerial that you see, the future site is approximately two acres with scattering of trees throughout the site. A single-family home was located on the property and was removed. And this aerial view really highlights its unique characteristics. The main entry would be along Pointer Road on the north side with an access point as Brittany was able to highlight off of Canyon Lane to the south. It is nestled amongst some homes with five of those properties having a private easement access, driveway access to their homes. And the photos on the right side kind of highlight what the site currently looks like. So throughout the project's community engagement stage, we engaged over three hundred community members, including neighbors, families, kids, all ages, in workshops looking at different options for amenities to help guide our future concept plan. And we offered community surveys, recordings of the meetings for neighbors who couldn't make the event. And this input really helped guide the drafting of today's concept plan that we're presenting. And our community engagement included three virtual meetings, two community events, three community surveys, and not included in this timeline that you see here is the numerous meetings that we had with adjacent neighbors as well as attending five NAC meetings. So that was with the West Slope NAC to present and discuss the project. We kicked off the project with a virtual meeting as well as an onsite event in April of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, a little bit soggy, but we had a latte of love for our park event where we served treats, hot coffee, and really got an idea of what people were interested in and seeing in a neighborhood park as well as maybe themes surrounding the site. A little over a hundred and fifty people have ended that, attended that event. And the graphic here on the right that you see is really a highlight of what we heard. The community was very excited about opportunities to gather with friends and family, play opportunities, as well as spots to rest, relax, meditate, really looking at amenities and/or comforts of having open lawn space, shaded space with trees or shelters, pathways and connectivity, as well as nature and water play. This was really largely consistent with what we heard in the survey as well as the request to have more natural, natural theming elements into the park including birds, pollinators, plants, flowers. So with the information that we gathered there, we held, we held a second event and as well as an online survey where we created three bubble diagrams to show various layouts of the site. And those layouts were presented via survey as well as at our Parktober event where we hosted a carnival atmosphere with games and crafts. And combined with the feedback and survey and the meetings that we held with adjacent community groups and members, we heard that option C was, so the, the far right option was the most preferred. So we really moved forward balancing the community's desires to have a wide variety of amenities and play while keeping the site natural and theme and relaxing or restful, as well as feedback from our internal design team. That's the folks who are going to continuously maintain this site. Also considerations to note was slope, health of existing trees, access along Pointer Road, street frontage, and parking. I think I went, did I go backwards here? There we, there we go. So as mentioned, this site does have private access easements off of Canyon Lane. And the design in front of you really retains access to these easement holders. And we've worked over the last month to refine that secondary access that you see running east-west along northern boundary. That is one of the changes that we made, just to ensure that we weren't precluding any easements to adjacent property owners. And then the mid on the right really kind of highlights what Brittany was referring to as that narrow accessway that we have, that, that entrance way and why some of those conditions that we, or design variations have, variances have been discussed and talked about. And I'm gonna turn it over to Catherine to go over the site a little bit more and then also Chair McCann, we can respond to your question regarding maintenance, long-term maintenance as well.
Yeah, thanks Nicole. I think we'll start here since this is the question at hand. So as, as Brittany mentioned, we've gone through a number of iterations and gone back and forth with staff on this quite a bit. It is THPRD's position that they will be able to maintain painted surface, thermoplastic surface on the pedestrian portion of the shared accessway to a higher standard over a long length of time than different materials or differently colored concretes. In the case of different materials, Um in the case of different materials, um we think it's it's there's gonna be a lot of problems trying to maintain like concrete and asphalt right next to each other in a narrow situation. And in the case of colored concrete, um there's always a problem trying to match colors and textures, even if you do um pores a day apart. Um so for both these reasons, uh we are asking for a painted surface. Um and this would be like a a kind of green lane like you might see on so in in Portland or some other areas. Um continuously painted surface all the way up the accessway to delineate the pedestrian portion of this walkway. And that is in addition to the um bollard lighting and uh uh additional signage. So I think can we move on or do you wanna? I guess we could come back to this if we have more to talk about.
Catherine, I just want to add one thing um to that. We service our sites once a week. And so access on our inspections and our sites is quite a bit more timely than maybe what what we typically see or what uh local jurisdictions typically have on hand when inspecting road and safety maintenance. And that's why one of the reasons we feel that this is a longer term solution for us. It also allows our maintenance staff all maintenance staff can be trained in making sure that paint is on rather than having to contract out to a service that may need to do uh repairs. So I'll just add that as well, Catherine. I'll shoot it back to you and change the slide.
Thank you. Um and just uh just going through some of the other components of this uh park. We are providing concrete pathways that shown in per mostly in purple throughout the park. Um these are all ADA standard uh um it will meet ADA standards. Um there are, we do have a couple of areas of soft surfacing around the nature exploration area down the southeast corner of the park and in the um gleaming garden up at the very northeast corner of the park. Uh and then next in the gleaming garden, this will be an area with um fruit trees, um berry bushes and um hardy herbs, perennial herbs. Next please. Our shelter is a twenty by twenty foot um off the shelf uh place or picnic shelter. Picnic tables. Our water play, uh the examples you see here, this is the sort of water play we're looking at. It's kind of a um basins and shoots system as opposed to like a um water jets or sprinklers kind of system. Next. Play equipment, we're still working through these designs, but this is kind of, this is roughly where we're at at the at the moment. Um so we're working on finalizing these designs now. Next. Nature play, um the nature exploration, these are not intended to be uh full-on play areas with surfacing, but more like logs and sticks for kids to pick up and play with and build into things. Next please. And of course, open lawn for people to um you know, they're not, it's not enough lawn area to play like a pickup, like a full-fledged game of soccer or anything, but you know, you could kick a ball around or throw a frisbee or have a picnic. Next please. And there you have it. We're very excited about this, so happy to take questions.
Thank you. Um uh commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lawler.
Yeah, could um back to the uh accessway to Canyon Lane because I do believe that will be a primary entrance for a lot of the neighbors because the Canyon Lane is kind of the artery of the neighborhood. Um so what would it look like? Uh I think this is sort of uh Commissioner McCann's question. Um in you in your view, what are you proposing? Using this image as your palette?
So we are proposing is um I wonder if I can and draw on this. Um so I think basically what we're looking at is uh this would be our concrete area with with a uh medium broom finish uh to delineate the the more vehicular side, although you can't drive obviously a car in five feet of driveway, but um and then the pedestrian side here would be that green thermoplastic uh surfacing over light broom finish concrete. Um and we'll have some signage kind of over on this side and some decals on the ground as you enter to delineate which side is which.
So it would say something to the effect pedestrian lane or or something to that effect?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
There would also be signage indicating that it's a shared use, so whether that's verbal or some sort of iconic um sign that would represent walkers, vehicle and vehicles using this space as well.
Yeah.
Oh, and and the the signage will include that this is a private drive. It's not for public vehicles.
Okay, and so the primary concern you have with staff's proposal is is it um the maintenance? Your ma- your ability to maintain it, is is that it or is it a cost variable? What's the driving force in your view of objection to the staff's proposal or options?
Yeah, that it's a great question. Um the the requirement is two materials uh which as we expressed in in our variants and as Brittany pointed out, we've worked through the i- idea that having two different materials joined together in a very narrow space um can be problematic and create these joints um that could allow for failure a little bit quicker or deterioration, I said should say, a little bit quicker than if it was one paved surface. And so looking at the the concrete option is what we're looking at, which is one whole surface. Um in order to delineate or um and Brittany and Fabio, correct me please, i- if I don't state this correctly, uh people experiencing vision impairment um need some sort of textural difference uh that could be accommodated with a broom finish. And so we've done that as well, which is the broom finish. One of the other recommendations is to pigment the concrete. Um for us, as the park district, my understanding is the pigment of the concrete is deemed to be a longer term surface. And typically, that would be the case if you were working in a roadway that had high volume traffic. We're not in that space and we have and also in a roadway where maintenance is not readily available. The park district services the site once a week and inspects safety issues for playgrounds, um for safety surfacing, for any um things that look out of the ordinary. And in our inspections, we would include the painting and the striping of that particular section. Therefore, um we feel that a different colored surface as suggested or recommended by staff, the thermal pass plastic painting meets the intent, and we can service that much easier than any type of hard creating a difference in hard surface material by coloring the concrete. Typically, concrete, you if needing to be repaired, you need to shut the area down. It needs to cure. You're also hiring a different contractor. We have part-time seasonal folks as well as um people that are maintaining other sites, so um the type of service surfacing for painting is actually more conducive for our long-term maintenance.
And just kind of a brief follow-up, what is the potential maintenance issues associated with this thermoplastic? Might it crack or break off or is it, what happens to it in the freeze thaw and all the kind of weather that it might experience?
I can take, do you want to take it?
No, go ahead, by all means.
Um it 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 is a fairly, it's fairly flexible, so it holds up to, I mean, it holds up fine to vehicular traffic, um freeze thaw, et cetera. It does um eventually parts can crack and peel away, but this is something where with the weekly maintenance, that can be repaired almost immediately. Um so that it retains its its uh integrity long-term.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, commissioners?
I I have a question, Chair McCann. Um maybe it's to Nicole, but um Catherine, if you have an idea of of the answer, that's fine, whichever person wants to answer that. Um my question is, I know it's a private drive, but it sounds like a lot of pedestrians are going to be using this access point to gain access to the park, even though the main entrance is from the north. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
And so is it going to be clearly defined with, not to get sign happy or anything, but is it can be clearly defined with some type of sign stating that this is a community access point for pedestrians?
Yeah, we are providing signage um at the street uh or well, right behind the right of way. Um and we will also have uh decals and signage um painted onto the surface of the accessway to show that this is an entry point to the park.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions?
I just have one clarification, uh Catherine. So you said that you're looking at your sketch that you did. Um the, when I look at the plan, the area to the left is the pedestrian area and the area to the right is the vehicular. And I guess my question was really it looks like if I was walking up this and as a pedestrian, I would want to continue on the gray paths and loop. And so should the right side be the pedestrian side and the I maybe I'm not understanding how how the cross works when the folks are going to their driveway and the pedestrians are going into the park.
Right, so this is, this is something we we've actually gone back and forth with staff on as well. A a a big part of this is um we're not able to put just, we have the on the on the right side, if looking at this photo, on the right side of the accessway, there is um an existing rock retaining wall. And so we can't put um bollards really close to the retaining wall without really impacting the available space for vehicular maneuvering. So we put the bollards on the left side. Um and in order to maintain enough light along there, we have to put the pedestrian route close to the bollards on the left side as well. So it's a little counterintuitive, but that's that's the reason behind that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Chair McCann, I would also note that um once once you get past this driveway, it would be easy to cross because you wouldn't be impeded. There wouldn't be a vehicular um conflict that would impede you from moving here.
Okay.
This will have an electric gate at the end. Um so this would be a barricaded gate for folks, um pedestrians that would not go further up north.
Okay, alright, thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any other questions? Alright, thank you very much. So we are now at the public testimony portion for this agenda item. We will call testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. So now is time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Do we have anyone who would like to speak on this application? Do not see anyone? Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Still seeing no one? Uh do we have anyone who would like to speak in favor, neither in favor nor in opposition? Alright, uh it appears that we do not have any public testimony for this agenda item. So uh I don't think that the applicant needs a rebuttal. Um so with that, do um do staff have it, does staff have any final comments? Oh. Jabra, sorry, I see your hand.
Yeah, a couple of comments on the path. Uh the code requires be constructed of two different materials, you know? Typically, we'd use asphalt and concrete. You see it all over the place in parking lots. Uh there isn't an issue combining both materials. The use of thermoplastic, it's also, there is a safety issue with it, especially when it's wet and when it's in a shaded area, it becomes slippery. Uh that's one issue with thermoplastic. The other thing is the use of the green color. It's not allowed by the manual uniform traffic control devices, which is the national standard that is adopted by the state of Oregon for any for the pavement, uh traffic control devices for streets, highways, paths, multi-use paths, trails. Uh the green actually is reserved only for bikelings, so you cannot use the green color for it. Uh the use of you know, I heard a lot about maintenance and issues with the colored concrete. It's no different than any concrete. If you have a material on top of it, when it's gonna crack, it's gonna crack. You have to get dig it up and fix it. Uh colored concrete, you could order a certain color. So they have different colors that you could order with it like a paint or number. And anytime you need to repair it, you just order that same color and it could be repaired. Uh yeah, you can concrete with a different color and different texture, we feel is the appropriate treatment to differentiate between the path, vehicular path and pedestrian path. Uh so staff uh supports the use of concrete, pigmented concrete and standard concrete next to each other as a solution to this.
Uh are there any other final comments from staff?
No other comments, thank you, Chair McCann.
Thank you. So with final comments completed, I will close the public hearing and as a standard procedure, I will randomly pull commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Adams.
I approve.
Commissioner and I.
Um I think it meets the approval criteria. Um I'm kind of on the fence about the path markings. Um but I hear Jabber's comments and think we should stick with the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Um I think that the painted surface makes more sense. I would tend to agree with the applicant in terms of maintenance. Um staff can be trained to paint much easier than they can be trained to replace concrete sections, so I think the maintenance will be a lot less without options, so. Um but with the conditions of approval, I think it meets the criteria, so I'm in favor and I think it's gonna be a great addition to the neighborhood.
Commissioner Winter.
I've, I've learned that never disagree with transportation department. So, and I understand why there's this controversial issue. I will not use services, especially not code. I understand what THPRD is trying to do. And I'm surprised that they're consistent as they are, but code is code. So I'm saying no.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawler.
Yeah, I think this park will be a great addition to our neighborhood. So I'm very happy that it's moving for, or hopefully moving forward. I mean, I'm going back and forth about the, the accessway, but I too feel that as good of a maintenance potential as available with THPRD staff. I'm not familiar with this thermoplastic material being used on a pedestrian way. And I see it, I, I suppose what I see in Portland is thermoplastic, but I'm not quite sure. But I also am swayed by the conclusions of our transportation planner. So I am like, I am in favor of the project, but I do believe we ought to stick with the staff proposal for dealing with the accessway.
Thank you. And I think I, I have similar feelings to some of my commissioners. I think any of the solutions proposed actually provide a visual differentiation between the vehicular and pedestrian ways and, and could provide that safety. So personally, I, I don't have a problem with THPRD's solution. But understand if the code is saying they have to be two materials per what Jabra said. I, I don't know that section of the code well enough to know that. So I think it seems that any of these could be a reasonable solution, including the different finishes. So I guess to that end, I'm comfortable sticking with the condition of approval from the city. I do think the rest of the project is wonderful and I think the team has done a great job putting it together. So is there a motion?
Commissioners, I move to approve Pointe Road Park LU 32023-00667 based on the staff report dated July 3rd, full edition of memos dated August 1st. And including, and includes the conditions of.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. Oops.
I think Commissioner Lawler seconded. Is there any discussion? A vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Adams.
Yea.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner and I.
Aye.
Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
Was that a yea or a nay?
Nay, no, negative.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. And I vote aye as well. So motion passes. The planning commission's decision will be memorializes, memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provide, that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. The second item on the agenda is the application for LU 3 2024-00521 Floor and Decor Modification of a Decision, Case File Number PD 2 2024-00516. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code Sections 40.55.15.2C Parking Requirement Determination and 50.95 Modification of a Decision. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures to these ends. The following question will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts or site visits to declare? Commissioner Adams.
No to all three.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
No to all three.
Commissioner Lawler.
No to all three.
Commissioner and I.
No to all three.
Commissioner Winter.
No to all three.
And no to all three for me as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Not seeing any, so let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the applications can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have three minutes for rebuttal. The planning commission will then hear any final comments from staff. So we will now begin with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair McCann. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Regner, Senior Planner with the City of Beaverton. Hopefully you guys can see my screen. The application before you tonight is LU 3 2024-00521 Floor and Decor Modification of a Decision Case File PD 2 2024-00516. The summary of tonight's proposal is a modification of a shared parking, parking determination application originally approved in 2022. A little bit of history on the property itself. There were actually two phases. Phase one is the Allen Commercial Redevelopment approved in 2021, kind of call that phase one. And then there's phase two, which is floor and decor, who is the applicant tonight. Associated with the floor and decor approval was a shared parking agreement for 40 spaces on phase one usable by floor and decor customers. The applicant is requesting to remove the shared parking requirement on the basis of changes in state law as well as local code requirements. A quick look at the site itself, we're looking at the Greenwood Inn site for those that have been around in Beaverton a while. Phase one, again, approved in 2021 is at area Long Allen Boulevard. The Fled Basin in the southeast also approved with phase one, but not germane to tonight's conversation. And then phase two is in the southwest corner, floor and decor. And it's the conditions of approval applied to this project we are asked, or the applicant is asking to modify tonight. Looking at the site plan, we've turned 90 degrees here, north is to the right of Long Allen Boulevard. You can see phase one here, this is a hotel being constructed right now. If you drive by, you'll see the hotel. And phase two, you can see here, floor and decor. When this application for floor and decor in 2022 came in, the final design was 40 vehicle parking spaces below what was required by minimum parking requirements with the development code at the time. In order to offset that deficiency, a shared parking agreement was entered into and conditioned that these 40 parking spaces highlighted in red would be constructed and available for floor and decor customers prior to opening of the business. But since that approval, some things have changed at the state and local level. The state of Oregon level, a suite of policies were adopted, referred to as the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Program, or CEFEC for short. CEFEC does a lot of things. DLCD on their website talks about reducing climate pollution, providing more transportation housing choices and promoting more equitable land use and planning outcomes. For the city of Beaverton of the last couple of years, probably the most impactful change we've made in our development code is regarding minimum parking. In effect, Beaverton and cities like Beaverton had two choices. One, they could do a litany of parking programs and projects and other policy changes. Or the city could eliminate all minimum motor vehicle parking requirements. And in 2022, Beaverton did the latter, eliminating minimum parking requirements. Effectively meaning that if floor and decor were to come in today, there would be no minimum parking requirements and a shared parking agreement would not be necessary because their minimum motor vehicle parking would be zero. And since the conditions of approval requested be modified tonight are related to simply meeting now outdated minimum parking requirements, staff agrees with the applicant that these conditions are now outdated and no longer warranted due to changes in state and a local policies and requirements. So let's quickly look at those, or those conditions. I will not read these verbatim, but essentially what they say is that prior to opening for business, policy three says you must build those 40 spaces identified on that plan I showed you. And condition four says those parking spaces must be lit. As we've talked about tonight, these parking spaces are no longer required to meet minimum parking requirements because we no longer have those in the city Beaverton. And as such, staff agrees with the applicant that these conditions are no longer required. As such, staff recommends that conditions three and four from the 2022 park determination be struck and no longer in effect. That concludes staff's presentation and we are happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff with regard to the application? It does not appear there are any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the applicant will now have 20 minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
Good afternoon. For some reason, I cannot turn on my video. Here we go. Okay, good afternoon, chair and commissioners. My name is Summer Zimmers. I am the Land Development Manager for Floor and Decor. Our address is 2500 Wendy Witbridge Parkway, Southeast Atlanta, Georgia. So Steve has provided a great summary of our, our modification of decision request. So I do not have an additional presentation tonight. However, Floor and Decor is in agreement with staff's recommendation to remove the shared parking agreement per the updated development code. And I would be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant with regard to the application? Does not appear there are any. Thank you very much. So we are now at the public testimony portion for this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. So now is time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? I'm seeing none. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Also none. And is there anyone who would like to speak neither in favor nor in opposition? Let the record show, have no public testimony on this application tonight. And so, does staff have any final comments?
Thank you, Chair McCann. Believe it or not, staff does not have any additional comments.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving right along. So with that completed, we will close the public hearing. And as a standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Adams.
I agree with staff that it should be removed.
Commissioner and I.
No comments.
Commissioner Lawler.
Seems straightforward. I think staff has made a, a good presentation.
Commissioner Winter.
I agree with, I agree with staff.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
I agree that it needs to be removed. Thank you.
And I agree with my commissioners. Is there a motion?
Commissioners, I move to approve Floor and Decor Modification of a Decision LU 32024-00521 based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated July 31st, including the conditions of, all conditions of.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion? A vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Adams.
Yea.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner and I.
Aye.
Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. The third item on the agenda is the application for LU 3 2024-00019 Mountainside High School Hitting Sheds, Case File Number CU 3 2024-00018 and DR 3 2024-00021. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria must be addressed, that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code Sections 40.03.1 Facilities Review, 40.15.15.4C Major Modification of a Conditional Use, 40.20.15.3C Design Review 3. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts or site visits to declare? Commissioner Adams.
No to all three.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
My mouse is very slow to respond tonight. I apologize. My spouse does work for the Beaverton School District, but other than that, no conflicts.
Commissioner Lawler.
No to all three.
Commissioner and I.
No to all three.
Commissioner Winter.
No to all three.
All right, and I have worked on the Mountainside High School site in the past, although I'm not working and I have also, I'm also currently working for the Beaverton School District on a project. However, it is not this project. I'm not related to it and I don't, it, it's not going to impact my decision or discussion on this item. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Let the record show no response. So the order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given twenty minutes for its presentation, followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. And members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have three minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation.
Hey, greetings Chair and Commissioners. I'm Aaron Harris, Senior Planner, City of Beaverton Community Development Department. My presentation this evening is for LU three, twenty twenty four dash zero 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 one nine, Mountainside High School Hitting Sheds, land use application CU twenty twenty four dash zero 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 one eight, and DR three, twenty twenty four dash zero 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 two one. This slide provides a project summary. The applicant proposes to construct two hitting sheds at Mountainside High School. Site improvements include new lighting and landscaping. This slide, uh, provides the land use application with the proposal. It's a major modificate, uh, mo- major modification of a conditional use and a design review three application. Here's the vicinity map illustrating the site and surrounding area. Subject site is located on the north side of Shoals Ferry Road and the west side of Southwest Hundred Seventy Fifth Avenue. Site's forty six point eight acres. The site is an existing high school. The small red box within the subject site illustrates the proposed location of the hitting sheds. It's located between the existing softball field and baseball field. Property to the north is undeveloped. Properties to the east, west, and south are mostly residential neighborhoods. Here's the zoning map. The site and surrounding area. The site is zone multi-unit residential. To the north is interim Washington County. To the east, properties are zone multi-unit residential, residential mixed A and residential mixed B. To the south, it's zone city of Tigerd, residential C, and Washington County Agricultural and Forest District. Properties to the west are zone multi-unit residential and neighborhood service. Here's a site plan illustrating the proposal. The scope of work is limited to what is shown in the red box there. This slide provides a rendering of the proposed hitting sheds. This slide addresses the major modificate, mo- major modification of a conditional use request. The addition of two hitting sheds triggers the requirement for a major modification of a conditional use due to an increase in the gross floor area of an existing conditional use by more than one thousand square feet. Staff notes that the proposed location for the hitting sheds is internal to the site, about three hundred and twenty five feet from the nearest property line and about five hundred and twenty five feet from the nearest public sidewalk. This slide addresses the design review three request. The design review three application is required because the proposal includes design elements that do not meet applicable design review standards. The applicant has proposed to address the corresponding design review guidelines only. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approves LU three, twenty twenty four dash zero 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 one nine, Mountainside High School Hitting Sheds, subject to the conditions identified in the staff report dated July thirty first, twenty twenty four. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Nye.
Um, I guess our, one of our design criteria is exterior building materials and talks about durability. And is there any concern with the durability of the metal siding and bats and baseballs damaging it, denting it, it looking really bad over time?
No. I, I'm, I'm certainly not an expert with the materials, but I think that the, the general impetus, and this is probably best answered by the applicant, but the, the general impetus of the, the proposed design to, to go with the guidelines instead of the standards is, is this you, um, need for a utilitarian sort of, um, design that is just conducive for exactly what this is, which is just batting cages for the athletes at the high school. So I presume that the, that the materials are, um, the materials that one would expect to be used for, uh, for batting cages.
There any other questions Commissioners? Oh. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to the applicant presentation. The applicant will now have twenty minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Steven Sparks. I'm the Executive Administrator for Long Range Planning for the Beaverton School District. My address is on the first page of the staff report. Um, I don't have anything, um, to add to what the staff presented. Um, but in response to, uh, Commissioner Nye's question about the durability of the building, wi- inside the building, there is netting to catch the baseballs and softballs that are going to be thrown, hit, and, you know, otherwise that might hit the side of the building. We also want to be sure that the building, um, stays intact and in good shape. So, um, we are purposely building it, um, with those features on the interior so that, um, the building doesn't get damaged in any way. And with that, I am happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Uh, Commissioner Nye. Um, I was actually, I don't care what the interior, what happens to the interior. I'm actually more concerned about the exterior. Um, most of the outbuildings, uh, um, the high school are block or brick. And I just, high school kids are really rough. And I, I'm actually more concerned about the damage to the exterior of the building being right next to the sports and not the, the sports fields and not being close to the school. So there's a lot of unsupervised time around these buildings. So that was just my only concern.
So thank you for that. In terms of the exterior of the building, the, um, there's always the potential for, uh, general mischief with, um, any building that we have on our sites. And when it comes to things like, um, painting graffiti or what have you, we deal with that immediately. We do have, um, cameras on site where we do, um, monitor, uh, in an after-action way to track down, uh, culprits who have, uh, damaged the, the buildings. Um, and, and that's across all of our, uh, properties. With respect to, you know, any other types of damage that might occur because of, um, you know, sporting activities, it's always possible that, you know, uh, foul balls will hit the, um, building and there could be dents. But the good thing with, uh, metal, we can, you know, repair that kind of damage. So, um, because it is this ancillary use next to the, um, you know, in between the, um, two ball fields, we want to be sure that our costs are, uh, you know, representative to the type of use that's going on, you know, at that site.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. So we are now at the public testimony portion for this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the app- in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. So now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Do we have anyone in favor? I see none. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? See none. Do we have anyone who would like to speak neither in favor nor in opposition? Appears we do not have any public testimony, uh, on this item tonight. So we will move on to final staff comments. Uh, does staff have any final comments?
No final comments. Thank you Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. With final comments completed, I will close the public hearing. And as a standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Adams.
Thank you Chair McCann. I'm a little bit concerned about materials being used. I think Commissioner Nye brought up a good point. Um, it wasn't really stressed on exactly what materials are going to be used for these sheds. Um, that's my concern. I, I think the staff does a good job and I would back up the staff, but that is a concern that I have.
Commissioner Winter.
I am in complete agreement with the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Um, I don't have any problems with it. I think it's located in a good place where it's away from property lines. Um, I'm a little concerned about the materials. I do agree with, uh, Commissioner Nye that it is going to get beat up over time. Um, but other than that, I think it's fine.
Commissioner Nye.
Um, I mean, I think it generally meets the approval criteria. I do have reservations about the materials. But I think probably from a technical standpoint, it meets the approval criteria. I just am sad about how it's going to look in ten years.
Commissioner Lawler.
Yeah, I share my, uh, fellow commissioners' concern about the looks of it, but it is pretty internal to the site. And, uh, so hopefully there will be ongoing maintenance should it be needed. But I believe it meets the criteria for approval.
And I agree with my fellow commissioners, although I am appreciative as Commissioner Lawler stated that it's interior to the site. And, uh, do appreciate, uh, including a much-needed and useful, um, space of batting cages for the, the students at Mountainside, which is great. Uh, so is there a motion?
Commissioners, I move to approve Mountainside High School Hitting Sheds, LU thirty two zero two four dash zero 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 one nine, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated July thirty first, including the condition.
Is there a second? Everyone jump at once.
I will second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? A vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Adams.
Yea.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Nye.
Aye.
Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. The Planning Commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So with that, we are now adjourned at seven fifty PM. Thank you very much everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.